This is the United States of America. We do the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman in that hat, prepare. Alderman's in a good outfit. Ads have a few will be in shortly. Alderman, happy birthday.
Yeah.
Alderman, Brandon Hauk, here.
Currently. There will be an engineer. He just called me. One of the ones that wants to speak to you guys for the RFQ. He's going to stop me on my way through. Papa Love is on his way, so whenever he gets here, I'll put him on stage to give his speech. I guess we'll start with grinder priorities and how you want to do the charges for that ordinance. Right there, Mary, with some footnotes in that first book right there.
Okay, this is like... Well, I'll just let you guys, because I pretty much know it.
You know.
Okay. And the orange one where you were saying, we've got that E. I was thinking we had that in one of the books.
She wrote the whole thing.
Okay.
That book, and then she just got it out.
But it...
She's like your missing section.
No, I think she said we didn't add, to add a section E.
I see that. I knew that's something that fell into one of the other...
It was one of, it was one of the other ordinance questions. But she said since those were one, we needed to add that section. Yeah, we need to amend that and add that section to that.
I knew it was in one of them.
Yeah, I did.
Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to do what I had done.
That's why I was very much here, like, well, it's still got to be in here to be physicist or British for bodies, or so.
So she's saying that for us to charge it, that E has to be in there, is that what she's saying? Customers served by Brandon pump Shelby.
Yes.
So that needs to be added?
Added, yeah, to that.
To that one.
Even though it's not repealing that older one, since that's a newer ordinance, she said we need to...
Just add it to it.
Add it to that new one.
Yeah, just adding that section, subsection to it. Because, I mean, it's getting out of control. I mean, real competitive.
Okay, devil's advocate, who's going to argue abuse? I mean, clearly defining things that are not supposed to be in there, that's...
Exactly. Almost that whole ordinance tells you what should not be in there. We're talking grease, you know, smacks once grease.
The only thing that needs to be, the only thing that needs to be down in there is your poo poo, your pee pee, and toilet. Let me write this down. That is the only...
The three P's.
The three P's.
Yeah. Poo pee and paper.
Yeah.
And these are what are not allowed.
She thought I made it three.
Those are not allowed. Oh, that's a...
It's probably shredded. Acids, irons, pickles. You can't dump the pickle juice down...
No, you can't. After eating, after drinking. So you make up, you add that, did you want to?
I do want to, yeah.
I think that's a proposal to add section E to...
What comes?
Orness, or next to me.
Or next to me.
I'll stick in that one. I will have that on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Next month's meeting. Because maybe that, if we can't do it, we'll push them. Because maybe they add section E. Now, if he's scheduled, how do you want to do that then? For what that is from my team, whatever. Or like, say we have to pump down something that we can't fit directly in the pump, it's better going to the storage because it can indirectly affect the lift station or anything else. Do we charge for the gallon where she, Joanne, kind of broke down her rates, or how do we?
That was a search.
Does she have charges for that? I don't know.
Yeah, remember she told me that was a search charge.
So I mean, how do I break that down? Should we have labor and have to go forward and all that? Would we charge? It's not really gross.
Is it a warning? I mean, I said earlier, a warning, one warning.
The first, the first one is a warning. The second one is you get charged for whatever we have to replace.
Including that, all I know that...
We have to replace and then plus the labor. And then you could use the equipment, you could replace it.
Yeah.
Normally, the first warning is a verbal warning for me or if we find anything that I sell, because you're resident, pay the same...
Technically, I think you would give me a warning.
I was intuitive in my...
April wasn't having it right.
Well, yeah, I'm right in feet, but like, I mean...
I know, but I'm just saying about April.
That would...
I say normally when he does, I will send a letter stating that you're violating this ordinance. Send the ordinance to them, and then the next one will be you are charged for...
And do we keep a folder except for these letters?
I don't have a single one since I took them.
Oh. Because then, because once we sell these E ones, that's what I was getting at, that they start doing that and tearing those up. Something happens, hopefully not. We don't want to have to be pulling new pumps, we just had to purchase that count, I mean.
Right.
And the lift station itself, we need to send that letter to everybody out there, I think, because it's just getting worse and worse and worse. And if you can get a shampoo bottle down there, there's a problem amongst other things I want to discuss. But, you know, because that's what caused that failure up there over time.
Because basically, once these new pumps get here, may install them, or actually take the honeywabby nuts and suck the...
Take it all the way out?
And clean it all the way out. And maybe soon we're done doing that, and we will install the pumps. But I think the letter should be sent out before again.
Yes.
That way everybody has a warning.
I will do that tomorrow. I will be coming in there.
Okay.
Send it to everybody?
On that, up there.
Or do I just send it to that section?
Can you send it with the water pump? I would say everybody that's on those.
On the connection on that, because it's such a large hall.
Can you just let me know what connection, what area is on that connection?
It's going to be everybody in the subdivision itself. Basically, all circle drive. I think, I think in reality too, I would send it to...
Just send it to that device?
The, I would send it to the gas station, Schultz, some TG.
TG.
TG, Tom Cave in the old place back there, I can't remember who they...
What was his name?
Right, the man's name.
I always had, um, it's a field box, uh, biller, yeah.
Yeah, and then the ladder backs, which they're on, they're on grinders themselves, but typically the stuff is not supposed to make it through. But I do see a lot of stuff make it through, so.
I'll do that tomorrow.
And you have the bad, and that's it. And then, like the new pumps, what do you want to do, once we install them? And do we want to honor, a more honorable warranty and maintenance? But after that, but unless it's a lack of views for that ordinance, so we got to point, place it, there's a part on it. Is it on the citizen, or is it going to be on our... Because that's what we're looking for money, I mean, we're just eating costs because most towns, and you know that, most towns go to this, because they can't absorb that cost, because people don't care it's not theirs. So, but you know, what is your thoughts, Frank?
I mean, personally myself, I'm operating myself, and I don't know if we try to go just like Terelac and French Village and stuff, how they got their setup. I mean, hopefully we can get off of them and see what their protocol and how they did. And I'm, uh, and see how they sponsored it, of doing it, and then letting it go or whatever, so.
Because I know that Terelac let it down, there's a lot of connections that aren't fixed. If a new one didn't destroy them, they will not replace them because they absorb over probably, what was it, a million dollar E? And they're already down probably if they're running their grinders. That's why I don't want, you know what I'm saying, get to that point, and then we're eating, we're just eating dead horse for sale.
I mean, I don't know what the board feels about it, how they feel about it. I mean, I personally myself, I mean, with me being a sit-in in town, I don't have a problem with it as long as I got all new stuff in my system. You know, right off the bat, you know, and I don't mind taking something over because, you know, at least I'm not eating the cost of right then and there. I mean, if 20 minutes on the road, it goes out, well, you know, I mean, replacing a pump. I mean, but I mean, we'd still be responsible to discharge.
Discharge on it to the man, yeah, which is normal and everything. Because that's why, what's your thoughts on it? Anybody have any ideas, consensus, thoughts, concerns?
That's a lot. I mean, you're, in the short term, it's not really costing the residents anything, right? Unless they destroy it in some way.
Yeah.
But down the road, what's the warranty against?
We got, I think it's a three-year warranty. If, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a three-year warranty if I remember right. I have to look at it again on the paperwork.
So if the thing lasts five years and the resident has to buy it, I think they would object to it.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's, it's another...
Devil's order on the thing.
There's a dead end room in both sides, but I mean, it's, if we're going to replace everything, you know, as in inside the pit all the way to the control room. I mean, I don't have a, and I know that's how French Village did, Terelac and what, and I don't know how they, what they did as in if they help with the cost of it, you know, if something happened to go out or whatever. But I just look at it as, you know, the abuse of the equipment. I mean, they know it's not theirs, and they're just abused it totally. If they know they have to take care of something, then they're going to be leaning on what they put in that system. And I mean, that's just like these E ones that we already installed, yeah, they'll get right through the grease. I mean, I've already watched it, and I gave warnings about it already, you know, about not dumping it. And I had April on one of them, I think it was, but disappointing. The grease hurts our system too. So, you know, I understand a little bit of grease on dishes, can't help it. But I know a lot of laundry has stuff in it that causes grease to build up in the nuts inside the grinder itself, especially if you use laundry powder, so, I mean, the pods ain't so bad, but, um, but yeah. It's to the point where I think if they know that if they have something to have a cost of, I just do it there. I think they would turn around and be like, okay, we can put that in the system. I mean, because I can go around to, you know, certain people's houses, and I can see what they put in there just. I mean, just like you go up to my house, there's, you know, hardly nothing in there. It just looks like water in there. I can go to another house, and then it have grease balls up it. I mean, so it's, so, yeah, so it's a, it's what they put in. I mean, just like women's products, the hygiene products. I mean, if you did, you'd be amazed how quick it can actually hang out of the grinder, you know what I mean? So, I know women, men can't help with their hair, go down the drain. I've seen where hair is going to bind it up on them, you know, and that's because it's an older pump, and they got the cutting power anymore. I have seen that, but you can't help that.
Oh, I don't just kind of like crazy.
Yeah, I mean, flushable wipe, people think, oh, they're flushable. There's nothing flushable about them. Yeah, you can flush them, but the grinder, no wipe now, so. But I mean, maybe, and like I said, maybe April or wherever, she can get with French Village, talk to them, just see what they did, see what kind of arrangements they made or whatever, airbag or whatever, and just see what their outcome was of it, and how they did it or whatever, bring it back to the table, you guys look it over, and be like, okay, there's a, you know, does still help, or, you know, whatever. I mean, I just know what they did, so, and I ain't never heard a problem out of anybody really with it. But it's just, uh, the thing about it is if it could be feasible to, the resident feasible to us, maybe in the metal or something, that would be very fragile.
Whatever they're doing, just, you know, to look at it and see, because I mean, both ways. We don't use it, but what if it goes out? You know, I mean, true, pair apart, but again, three years versus 20 that we lasted, I don't know.
And these are rated for 15 to 20 years. I mean, just like, no offense to grinders, we already got the ground, and it's rated for 20 years. Well, they're over there 20 year more, and they've been, I mean, decent grinders. I mean, I'm amazed, you know, but your stuff don't run in the toilet.
It's on, but...
But I say to do that, I would get over them, kind of talk to them.
Is there another, is it just French Village or...
Really, it's airbag.
How many communities use grinders? How many nearby communities use grinders?
There's still quite a few. I mean, there's a lot of it even, like, even up there, you know, like St. John's, we have, it's not owned by us, it's grinders. It's owned by residents that dumps into our main because of the, you know, the elevation. So it's a thing, most, most places as of now is trying to go to gravity fed and just have lift stations. But there's still a lot of out there community, small community, that has the grinder system, so unfortunately. So, but they're, like I said, French Village and all that, they went to, they replaced everything. They went in and replaced panels, and replaced grinders, a lot of ours. But then they made an agreement, I guess, with the residents, this is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it, and everybody accepted. So I don't know their paperwork, I ain't seen their paperwork, but that's what you want to tell them, April, hey, call them up, find out, put it all on the table, gee, guys, if you guys look at that, that's a good idea, you know, it's not a good idea, so I mean...
I think Lake Hannah Desert, and the city of...
I think Iron Mountain.
Iron Mountain, but yeah, they're the ones having a real big problem though. So I'm going to have to look into it, see what they have on it. I mean, it's a dog, doesn't mean it's hot.
Yeah.
So item number one would be stop the current damage.
Yes.
And have the residents that's being neglectful of that pay for the damage. And then item two would be what are we doing in the future in terms of upgrading and the policies that we generate connected to it.
Correct.
So we're in agreement on step one.
Yeah.
And then on two, I guess we'll need more information.
Yeah, we'll just have to get more information from...
And base it all that, and go from there, work here.
Yeah.
Definitely have it.
I'm loving that one. Yeah.
So that way, I mean, we don't keep eating grinders, because I mean, how much are all those labor? The E ones.
What are the E ones now?
With, with labor, it's three state of the year.
I can't remember, April, I've got so many things going on for you. So, right, now we are looking at, like, uh... I don't know if I got it right here. That's what I just did, but we've got to be, we've got to be... I think there's like 27, 28.
Yeah, it's between 25 and 28.
Yeah. Anyways, and if we took off, I think it was like $30 off each one because it had a disconnect, and we don't need a lot of the disconnect, we already got disconnects. So that takes off a little bit of money. And just for them to install them, it's an extra $500 or whatever to install, you know, so just roughly around here, looking at 3 grand now, you know, I guess. If they come and actually install, you know, but if it's in AM, we're going on the show, we're saving that extra five, you know, so. I've been on, so, the cost will up a little bit, everything going up, you know, that, so. But yeah, I think this last one around 27 or something like that, so.
Probably around 3, 3,000 labor.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Any more on that or... Michael, I want to introduce, he's a little bit late, right? He's an engineer, a contractor, me, from Portland Engineering.
Great.
Yes. Sorry, we're skipping down numbers.
Yeah, we're skipping down number seven.
Please, you go.
Yeah, let's go on.
Sure. So my name is Mike Montgomery, Portland Engineering. Some quick background about our company, and probably lots of funding now, so you can either keep and use, or read whenever you get tired at night, can't fall asleep, or save.
Save.
So, a little bit of quick background about our company. We started it about two years ago. But we have been in the business for combined of over 40 years now. So the main things we work on are water and sewer systems. And beyond that, we go farther, and we specialize in helping folks to hear funding. Quick question, am I on TV tonight? So we go a step farther than most engineers, and we work with a lot of small communities like yourselves, and we help find funding packages. So altogether, we've brought between 400 and 500 million dollars now to Southeast Missouri for infrastructure and funding. So that's a combination of grants and low interest loans that save cities and users a ton, a ton of money over the long term. So Mark Mayer, are you all familiar with Mark or...
Me, yeah, that's me and Dida, but the guy from Kansas City area, yes, we met with him.
So I think it sounds like he came down and took some pictures and videos and drawing footage, all really good. And he reached out to us because he knows that this is the kind of stuff that we work on. We work on very large projects and very small projects, so it's all the same for us. So for instance, we just, we're in construction right now on a 20-plus million dollar project on the side of Papa Love. And we also do teeny tiny couple hundred buck jobs for some. It sounds really cheesy, but I like it because we get to do a lot of good cheesy work. So that is why I'm here tonight, it sounds like, just from what I've heard so far, you all have some substantial wastewater issues, some concerns. I have a lot of thoughts, just based on my very high level conversations with Mayer and just hearing you all this evening. However, you have already applied for what's called a Clean Water Engineering Program. Does that sound completed already?
Yes.
Quick. And so we, I have brought with me tonight's, our statement of qualifications, which is what it's called.
Is that completed already?
Yes. And the, I printed it on my printer that is good enough for what I use it for, but the five higher quality ones are in there. So, and that's my business partner, print those on the fancy printer. So I brought that this evening before I continue applying them on. If you have any questions or comments, I'd like to hear them. I'm going to bring this over here to you all too, and like I said, the full version is on its way, so it's obvious to everybody. But I did want to bring that, just you guys to get an idea of who we are and what we do. I have a quick question for you all. This is a little bit put in the cart before the horse, but do you have a total pressure system? Is it all pressure, or you have some gravity?
Oh, we have gravity fed, uh, they're about 140, one gravity fed, and then rest of it, they're in, uh, fortunately.
Okay. Typically, I did hear some commentary tonight, just to see, just for background, how systems are typically set up. You may all know this, I might be a reason to wire here, but typically you put in pressure systems, and you have lots of those doing this because then it's just not efficient for the gravity. But what a lot of communities do is, and we help them with, is we look for certain areas where we could, although there may be hills, we could gravity flow everything kind of to this basin, and maybe these guys can load it to this basin. And then you have two, one or two or three larger pump stations that can really tear through all that trash and come through more easily, save money in the long term, and also makes it easier on the end users, because you don't have to be in this situation of, are we responsible or are they responsible? At the end of the day, someone has to pay for it, so. There are also options where you can screen out a lot of the inorganics, plastics and things, fog up those pumps, the grind pumps right now. And that's easier to do if you're happy, if you have lots of flow coming to one area. So instead of going each area, installing something like that, that's not very cost effective. You know, because I might put the cart way before the horse, but, and maybe that, you all already are set up in a way that it doesn't make any sense to centralize some of that flow, having it up there yet. But so, you know, I was trying not to interrupt earlier, but, yeah. So I have a little bit of different background from most engineers. I am an engineer, have my E license at line yards. However, I also was an operator for a number of years, wastewater operator. I operated 40 facilities, and I changed the way I see and... It's helped me, I think, be a better designer and get better products to folks. I had an intern this summer, I'd tell him, things can look really good on paper, they can be real pain in the butt to build or operate. So always love to get input from the community, the folks who work on every day, some of you all are good operator for my conversations. I don't know if he gives you trouble and has it back to your face, and then he's still probably...
You may report to here, Chuck.
Yeah.
He knows what he's saying. He knows his keys and hews.
He knows his keys and hews.
Yes. Uh, so our approach, we like to come in and and help folks, again, we're kind of cheesy inside of there. We do, it is business, we make money doing it, but we get to do a lot of good too. Um, furthermore, we really hold the community's hands as much or as little as they want for the whole process. Uh, everyone's different, some communities will be more involved, some say, this is too much, take care of it. Either way, we're flexible. Um, let's see. Again, I want to emphasize the part about the funding, that's our main thing beyond just engineering side. Uh, so there are three main funding sources in the state that you all may or may not be familiar with, but we write our report. If if you went selecting this, uh, in a way that all three main funding agencies would accept the report. Each agency has different criteria in their reports, uh, what they're looking for. So, if you're missing a section, they may say, this one's not eligible, come back and re-do it for it. It's not fun to encounter that, but the way we write it is holistic and we included, so it matches all funding sources. Uh, not to mention the fact, if they do come back and say, you're missing a section, we'll we'll add a section. Uh, if that turns out to be a better funding source for your community. Uh, there's a lot of grant dollars floating around, uh, and that's really what we hope folks capture first and foremost. I looked at some of your demographics online, um, how accurate do you think they are? The median household income right now is sixty thousand dollars, thereabouts, is that?
That's not very.
Does your guy tell you that's wrong?
My whole census is, yeah.
Okay, I agree, and driving through town, it could be, but I, there is, there are a lot of census errors, especially on small communities. Uh, have you all ever done an income survey?
We discussed it, but yeah, I don't know if that point, and how many people would actually be willing to do so.
Yeah. Again, I'm putting the cart in front of the horse just a little bit, um, but I did want to mention it because driving through, it did seem like sixty thousand is probably high. And the census data had a margin error, plus or minus thirty eight thousand or something, which is.
Wow.
Anyway, uh, I complained to census folks and said, that's cool.
That.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would argue with that, I was weak about it, so, yeah, for.
So, I've been involved in a number of income surveys throughout my career. We just finished one two months ago in Delta, Missouri, uh, just out of state. Uh, everyone I've been involved in, if a community, if I ask that question, do you all feel like this is great? If they say no, we feel like it's much lower, I probably didn't know the community better than you do. And we sent, we did the full census, uh, the student survey, and find that, yep, your income was about half of what the census data said was, which moves into more grant eligibility, so. Uh, what I'm getting at is, a lot, even if you don't work with us, uh, that's okay. I want to make sure you all have the tools to.
Does your company do the surveys?
Uh, we we help with it, um, and we have to be careful not to. There are there are certain rules depending on which funding agency you're working with, because we have a dog, a dog and a bite, so to speak. Um, in that case, if we are working for you. However, are you members of the Regional Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Plus, I can help you the whole, whole way, give you all the literature, strategies, Excel worksheets, uh, or basically do it without giving you, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Plus, folks are much, in my experience, folks are much more willing to share that information with you all than they are instructed.
Some general.
Yeah. You have a relatively small community, uh, three hundred thereabouts. Uh, so, the the survey that we want is, just so you know, they would want you to survey every household. Uh, they would only require that eighty percent of them give you an answer for what it's worth. So, again, I I like mentioning that, uh, in case you do work with somebody else and they say, oh, your income just wasn't there. Uh, I want to make sure you know that you have that tool in your pocket to be able to use that. Of course, if you work with us and, well, it'll be longer. Trying to think if there's anything else pressing tonight.
Do you do revisions of the current systems?
Yeah, so, so what we'll do, um, oftentimes, yes, uh, so, back to the point, oftentimes, a city will call or somebody will call me and say, hell, everything's broken. And I say, okay, let's start a beginning, and we'll go in, and then I'll oftentimes help guide them towards the engineering program. You guys have already applied for it and already gone into the works, uh, because that's the best way forward because it's eighty percent grant and it's a really good deal. It means that we can do a really deep dive and send in, uh, subcontractors, camera inspections, a lot more in depth work than than you would just get with help. Um, so, you're already a step ahead of where I normally start this conversation, uh, so yes, in the report, we'll do a a full review of the system. We'll look at, in wastewater, we can do it in two ways typically, two, two parts. One is collection and one is treating, and we'll look at both of those. Your collection system is the pressure and the gravity system together, and we'll look at that all together, and that's where I'll do a deeper dive and see, is this really, this setup? It it may be the best option for you all right now. My gut tells me it was probably a more efficient way to do it, but I haven't looked yet to see. Um, and then on the wastewater treatment side, we would look at plants and see, how are the conditions in?
It's a thousand years old.
You need to show me that some blood too.
And then we would look at a few options to get it all up to, up to current standards. And I like to use, uh, I'm kind of an early engineer and all that, I work for years, spreadsheets all the time. I like to say, I will make a recommendation based on whatever the spreadsheet says, unless you have a really good reason not to do that. And what I mean by that is, we'll look at three, three or so options that would work, and we'll do a long, um, twenty five life cycle analysis on it. And whichever one is cheapest is usually the one I'll recommend, unless you say, I just really like this plant, I want to keep it, and you all agree. Well, I'll do it, it'll cost you more, but, uh, if that's not, if that's what you want, uh, we would look also at options, rehabilitation. What can we do to bring this thing back to life and get another twenty, thirty years out of it? Uh, from what I've heard so far, it sounded like that's probably not the direction.
Frankie, you can take over on that one.
We did. Did you reach your answer?
Yeah, I answered.
I didn't, we need a little T and O C. Uh, that's really bad.
Oh, I'm T and O C, really bad.
So, I would look at that, at those options. If it is just totally shot and it's not worthwhile looking at rehabilitation, I'll say, it's not, it's not worth. It's way too expensive and it's not going to work, skip it, and then we'll give you a new option that will work. Uh, there's lots of different technology available, oftentimes, we'll work with your city staff and see, what are you familiar with? What do you like? What do you dislike?
It'd be you to bang.
Yeah.
You do the bang.
Like I said, I have a unique perspective because I worked in this stuff and that changed the way I saw a lot of things.
Since I'm curious, this is the cost of the analysis, design and recommendation.
Good question. So, the, the grant that you all have applied for already, and you're applying next week or two weeks, and a big engineer to do it for you, that, that has an amount of sixty two thousand five hundred dollars, eighty percent of which is grant, so the, so DNR is going to give you all eighty thousand dollars, excuse me. Eighty percent, fifty thousand dollars, so I have two of these.
More than me.
I was walking to the house and, uh, the four year old tackled the two year old and I just looked at my wife and, I gotta go.
I got a meeting.
Yeah, I got a meeting, yeah. And she looked at me skeptically, this guy, he's only a year old. Uh, so, anyway, I lost my grant up for a second, but yes, good question about the cost. You all will have a contribution of up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars towards that project. And that's what you've already gone, gone through. And that's why I mentioned before, that eighty percent grant means that we can do a really deep dive and do a lot of good and do a deeper analysis than we could if you didn't have the grant.
And that's one thing, we're okay with.
Okay, I should have mentioned that earlier, uh, Papa Bluff and Hickory. I live in Hick, my business partner is Papa Bluff, uh, and we have staff in both businesses.
How old is the business?
Walking, two years old. Uh, as I mentioned before, however, we have been in the business, my business partner's been doing it, uh, Papa Bluff for twenty five years now. And I'm getting close to ten, oh, no, that's time flies. Uh, I'm in the same area, so this is what we've done our entire careers. In fact, I can intern with my now business partner, make sure I have a city college, and that's how I learn people's stuff.
Where'd you go to your junior school?
S and T, Raleigh. My old intern, he's been working with me this summer, he's at S and T as well, so.
So, let's set you aside from the other ones, they all say they could, they'd be grant funding and help us with that, or be actually physically involved with the city, proactively working with the city, instead of saying, well, you know, here's a bunch of paperwork, verbatim and all this, and.
Yes, so I can mention, we will hold your hands as much or as little as you want and help walk you through the paperwork. There, there's going to be paperwork with everything.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that's the, typically, I tell people to trade off the free money or grant dollars, just headaches, paperwork and time. It usually falls on you, I already clerked.
Yes.
It usually falls on you. But we'll help.
But I do have a question, I know our operator here, Frankie, um, he likes to have someone say so on how he has the system going. Um, are you guys going to be opposed of him coming in and being there and showing you, basically? You guys say, oh, we want it this way, but he says, oh, I want it this way. Are you guys going to go with his word or are you guys going to go with the way you want it to go?
Um, we will take his word into consideration if there's a really good reason not to do that, like, I can't think of, I can't even think of an example, but if you wanted to like, I'm, it's me silly, right, I'm embarrassed, I'm on camera. If you wanted to like connect the sewer line to the raw drinking water line, I'd be like, well, no. I can't, I can't be on board with that, but as.
I'm saying, like, if he wants it at one angle this way and you guys want to do it this way, I mean, are you guys going to oppose of having it go the way he wants to go instead of the guy, the way you like it to go?
Uh, I am not ashamed to alter my designs ever, if there's a better way to do it, then I'm not attached to that.
I would say, I was just asking, because he's known this, I mean, he's been in this town for twenty two years, so.
He was an operator, he's kind of.
Yeah, with, being operators.
Subject to understanding Frankie's way of wanting to do things versus, and and the right.
If you have that in the business assessment, if we can take a day, maybe that Friday, I'm normally off on Fridays, for my job. But, um, if you come down on Friday morning and we go through your minute assessment or whatever, I can take you around, show you. This is what the sewer plan is and how we want it or whatever, I, you got it, I mean, you showed me blueprints, that's the way you like it, and we go with it. So, that's kind of the way.
Frankie's got, it's on, every day, and is familiar with the bottlenecks, uh, the design bottlenecks, you know, as an engineer or where. And then the other side is, he's an engineer, and there's certain way to do things, and that's the way you do it.
Oh, yeah.
And then that feeds, you know, that gets, uh, softened and taken to the additional, Frankie's perspective is necessary as well, because, uh, even in like an architecture, someone who designed a building, like the community center in St. Kennedy, and spent millions of dollars on it, and then five years later, they have runoff problems that are, who should have told them, don't build it this way because you're going to have problems, so that's really what we're talking about.
Yes, I didn't mean to just make it sound like I wouldn't.
No, no.
I thought I would oppose to some of these, that I just, uh, the safety of the public comes first, and, and what I would do, I wouldn't just say, no, along the way. I'd sit down and say, all right, let's talk about this and I'll explain why I think it's this way. Still, well, we have to figure that out.
Working on that.
We would work that out, we would both, uh, hopefully be in the same page, but the the odds of that even happening in the first place, I think, are really times. But.
It would be a.
Well, the bad idea is, you've been a wastewater operator, I mean, I do, but it's a point of, it is, you know how your system runs and you know what needs to run right.
Yep.
You know, and that's, nothing engineers, engineers went to school to do this stuff. They don't see that every day, that sort of is happening, so, you know, but.
Those are the ones.
So, yeah.
One day, uh, I'll be finished with the project and I'll walk away, but it will be subsequent. And I would want to be your engineer forever, ideally, long term, so, for what it's worth, uh, for the normal. Um, and yes, uh, I came, and I mentioned it again, it's a long day, but I emphasize my intern, um, to always ask the operators and always ask the contractors. Um, something like a really brilliant neighborhood, it is just a laborer work on to build or very difficult, so. I ask the people to deal with it every day, get their opinion.
Is there the ones who do it?
No.
And I do know a lot of engineers who kind of, who who knows up and say, nope, do it this way. Um, when it comes to the public safety, at a certain point, maybe you have to do that, but.
Oh, yeah.
Most things, it's, uh, I did have a, an operator once who wanted me to, he wanted, uh, I'll give you an example of the time, it is. Here, it's going to be much a little older, uh, whenever, he, he wanted two wells right, right to each, right next to each other, that's one. That's one.
That's awesome.
Well, he bought so, he wanted to just do one, same little, but I said, I really can't recommend that from the engineering perspective. I know it sounds good, but the problem is it's drawn from the same, uh, I mean, I lost the project, but later they said, we should be right. Uh, so, uh, anyway, I guess I, I'll put my book down if I have to, but it's so weird, I don't think that's.
As you.
Have I, have I bored you all to death?
No.
Not at all, not at all.
If you have any other questions, feel free to give me a shout. Um, like I mentioned, starting around the community, we get a lot of latitude, freedom to not have to answer to a manager or somebody else for corporate things, so I take a long time out of my day, every day, to help folks, uh, answer their questions and people, although it isn't a nice thing, it's not just because I'm not excited. And that's guy, it is, it is business and people appreciate it, and they typically will say, thanks for helping, I want to help some more. Uh, and that's where we do help find grants and everything else to make it actually happen. So, we won't just write the report in this case and walk away. If you want to chase us out of town, you can, but, uh, we'll put together a funding package and work if you all work with the community and see what fits your needs, because that's. And it sounds like there's a lot of need for that.
Uh, yes.
And there are grants on grants on grants for other things, uh, that I won't bore you with tonight, uh, but have you all worked with grants often before?
I did DTS out of your hand, so, I mean, he's worked with the fire, Department of Conservation and probably other ones.
I have not, I've only been for a short time, so.
Yeah. So, there are, there are a few other, uh, for public infrastructure grants that are available for related programs. The pain in the butt side is, again, particular, um, you can get a lot of here that one too, so, if you want information about that, I'd have you.
Except for building systems?
Or lots of them, so oftentimes, the one I'm thinking in particular would be for things like street rehabilitation, uh, five hundred thousand dollars if you can put in something, a town that has a small fund, uh, they would only, if you have, I'm going to use an example that's kind of silly, and silly is my thing. If a town has a hundred dollars in a grant account, some, I don't know, refinancing, sometimes have a hundred dollars in a grant account. They put in ten dollars towards the project, uh, community developer block grant, we'll look at that as being very competitive. Whereas a town with twenty million dollars, who puts in twenty million dollars, they'd say, come on, you can do better. Uh, so, for what it's worth, so it's really tailored towards small, poor towns. Right now, on the surface level, you're not eligible because of the census data, however, communities just like Delta, who, they were eligible several years ago. I wrote the report at the project building, and they were not eligible any longer because of the census data. Went in, did an income survey, and said, look, they are eligible, um, so that's kind of the more, more bad story of that one. So, they're now back in the process of giving them a five hundred thousand dollar grant to resurface their streets. And they're going to have, they only have ten thousand dollars for their contribution, and, and so, for what it's worth, it's good, a lot of, and, and I get worried forever. But that's really where we found our way. Of course, if a community wants to come to us, hire to do it, then sure, if they just want to pay out their pocket, we'll do it. Uh, but most communities aren't. But most communities aren't in a situation where they need to do that. So that's where we really found the issue. And why we broke away and started.
All right. Well, Mike, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Thanks.
Nice to meet you. Thanks. Thank you. Again, like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a shout. I know the time is short. You extend the, the.
The R Q.
The R Q. Do you know, are you, do you know when we're gonna do the selection questions?
That's the one that you guys will start.
Well, we won't do our selection because I have to look at all the packets and see questionnaire.
Probably the fourth, I don't know, third, maybe.
Either that or definitely by September, or September meeting. I worry that that would have.
The budget.
The budget, work session, so, I mean. I mean, definitely by the September meeting.
Yeah, by September.
It will work with that. Every community, have you guys gone through this process before for anything, the R Q process? But not that solely.
Everybody hears it.
Oh.
Congratulations, Urban Dolls.
Fairly good, I mean.
Yeah, I always joke with you.
Now, wait a second.
So with the, this is part of the whole, we try to, I try to explain everything so people have, say in their own destiny, just. But so they have some, something in the project, they know what's going on, they have a sign, these papers that they have questions about, they can, but I try to explain it. It's all here, if you let me. So the R Q process for engineers, engineering selection, it's request qualifications, um, you're in that process right now. And that packet I brought is our, what's called state qualifications. So whenever you do have your meeting, when you pick an engineer, it'll go through, look, in a different criteria. It's awkward, it's so awkward, but that's the statements that it requires. So you look at who's got the prettier pictures all the time. Or who did you, I don't know. I was, a proposal is one thing. If you're looking at a proposal with a dollar amount, you can go with, if you want, this, everything's the same, you go with a cheaper option maybe. Request qualifications process is very awkward. I know that happens, and you feel so much, a face on a picture. But it's appreciated.
All right, Mike. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have two other R Qs, but something extended. I'm not allowed to give you guys those packages.
Okay. Well, one thing that he mentioned just now and that we've mentioned earlier is the income survey. So I think we need to get on that right away because that's our next step anyway for all of these things. It'll help with the streets and so.
So. Can we do that before we get it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I mean, even during that process, they'll reevaluate.
I just gotta figure out what surveys and what.
Cause they would get, it's gonna be most cost efficient and then like easy to everybody.
Well, they have like Mary or Michelle.
Did Mary say something, Mary?
There's like, there's a way to do it, I think.
I hope she said.
Yeah, there are different, yeah, Mary said there are two or three different ways. And I think she's ever, she's never got back to me on which way would be the best.
Well, I would actually like to see, see them and then maybe we can decide on which one we wanna send out.
We should do that soon and then we could ask Michelle in the county office, uh, too, she's probably familiar with that as well.
I have to.
I mean, people actually counting in, made it though versus just knocking off in the.
Depends on the month. Really? I mean, I think this month or the ones that we're doing, July or July tenth, I think I maybe sold twenty, twenty-five people.
Yeah, but we need to get, we need to put this first to get this done quickly. Cause it'll, uh, it'll have benefits for our wastewater system, the streets, et cetera, so.
Yeah, that's how she married today. She asked, well, she's working on her breakwater study for drinking water breaks and everything right now. She had it done by the week hopefully, so she's doing four of the ones too, so I can kind of sit there and even between. See if she can say now, I can't clear what she might think will work better, to kind of get a better response rate for Sam.
Right.
So, cause that's what she was trying to get at, doing the breakwater study and then kind of blending it in and get more people involved to make it more, you know. That, I guess we'll go back to this way. Another re-employment handbook update. Uh, I don't do that, I can have that binder.
Yeah, I've got the binder still.
Yeah. Do you wanna revise that or are there any changes? I mean.
Uh, there'll be a couple revisions, but it's pretty, it's pretty complete, so.
Do you still have mine, binder?
I have a binder with the employee, but I can't, I can drop off tomorrow.
Please, I'll look at it and maybe I can see if there's any revisions I can.
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll post it, it's, uh, I know it's. Okay, so that's good. Great, and it sounds great. Those are, I thought this would be seen at highway anyway.
I know, that's what I, so I said, they, this is all sort of little maps of what you get.
And they have the signs up for it, but.
Right.
Here in.
What we don't understand is what exactly they want from us. Did you understand the letter? What do they want from us?
I.
None of us really, you got what they want. So April was wanting to.
Just call them.
Call them and find out whether they will.
But I had to know what questions you want me to ask.
If it's something, what exactly is it they want?
And then just reading and looking at the stuff they've listed, then.
Right.
There's stuff in here that may connect with the French Creole, colonial, quarter, whatever, historic homes are listed. Here in the town, it would be Cascas, yeah, where St. Mary's name was down here, the steamboats used to come. Flower Mill, which is I guess where the elevator, the grain elevator is. And I guess the Shoff House, who used to own the mill, was the, I did a tour with my brother two weeks ago. Uh, that spoke about St. Mary and the flower mill and the name of the, uh, what names based on the flower sets, et cetera. So, uh, we could probably direct her to St. Kennedy's, uh, historic office.
But I said, we're not sure what she wants, what they want.
No, not yet, et cetera.
Yeah, that's on this page, kind of, kind of a breakdown. Here basically, you know, basically puts on the map, basically, but you're only asking for, um, ordinance or what was it? Sony, when you're asking for Sony.
Well, we created a line for historic areas of the town, which would be, I guess a lot of the houses up on the hill there. They've been over the hill or the primary.
And you guys are in primary ones.
Cause the others are washed away.
Yeah.
But so out there, they left and you have the, uh, America, which I blew it back into the war. Yeah, but I mean, you're from here, so maybe we can designate, uh, you know, like Ward One is the historic district or something, uh, which would include the Sears, you know, classic style also. Up on top or whatever. Hey, okay. So much for that.
Purple wave items?
Um, so.
Do you want to talk about the streets?
Oh, yeah, the streets, yeah. Like, also, I talked to Mark, so I got me with him and the commissioners, he was doing a little about finding our worst streets, deciding on what our worst streets are and bring it to their attention and see if maybe they can help us with it. And very like that, chip and seal stuff. I mean, until we can get a clear answer, because then the project's gonna take a little while. I mean, should I write them on? I mean, so, um, so he wants me to bring that up with the commissioners, so is there any streets you guys want to think that has no need to the less, so we can be measured with, and we can apply it. So they can see what they would be willing to chip and seal and that kind of buying that to get it all against fire for several years. Kind of get the bridge down there.
And that's a question on that. Yeah, but so how is that gonna work with, you know, chip and seal, I understand what that is, but how is that gonna work with the church lines from the water? So that's setting out or, like, I don't know, just trying to, you know, like, where they put the water main and they're gonna suck down. And they patched them, but they sunk them in on that.
I guess that's.
I don't know, I don't know if they have to put.
That would be a question to them.
I don't know if they have to put hot mix in there.
Make a tab?
Yeah, I mean, we got a tack oil already, but what I'm trying to say is, do we have to level it up or we're gonna have more tack oil and a lot more strings to it? Or, you know, and then the other question is about the valves. Everywhere we start laying a tack oil and that, uh, chips down, what that's gonna do to the valves, you know? Yeah, I mean, I ain't got valve chip and seal. Chip and seal works great after you put it mostly on, but it's just a point of it. The big business valves and stuff. Once you put that hack over there.
So I mean, I can bring in a shit.
Yeah, I did the hack on about it.
You have that one that's covered up down in the bends, uh, where it's chip and seal already, the valves covered there.
There's two valves there, they're in the gravel and not actually underneath the chip and seal.
Oh.
They're right there.
So, so they did, uh, or were they deeper air covered?
They, they never come across and valves, they were just gravel. They just did, where we raised it at. But it's just a question on, because once that chip and seal gets to a point that hard and it's like asphalt and then it is, basically, same thing.
I mean, have an idea for that.
I mean, for one road you could, I mean, possibly do that, you know, H Street going up between, Mulberry and Spruce. That one needs to be done. The other one that needs to be done, which I don't know, there's one resident back there and that's Spruce Street coming up to H Street down to the park.
What about at the base of the hill, parallel to sixty-one? So there's, uh, three or four streets like by the church, uh, across the street from the church.
Six Street, I don't know how Six Street really looks. I haven't drove down it. Like, you know, I mean, just kind of looking how the alligator parrot is and all that. Uh, no, Seven Street, uh, down to the river end, needs to be done. Uh, but State, you know, and that's a point too. State's got the right of way. Have a certain area, you gotta watch how we fade and whatever on that right of way. I think it's like a ten-foot pass, which you do have valves there at the end. The other street is basically like your street up there, that one's.
They're called, uh, two parts, yeah.
But there again, you have gravel, trenching, you know, you need to lay hot mix down, you know, to patch them.
By Locust or?
Well, I mean, I'm talking about up there in the corner at Herd House, you know, on that corner, Locust and Third. There's a trench, a gravel trench there still.
Right.
So, I mean, the other street, like, like I said, I mean, I drive up it and it looks fairly rough. I mean, Fifth Street and Dome Street going up, Two or Four Street is kind of rough. I mean, it's, uh, gator cracking and stuff. Uh, I mean, like Four Street, it's up on Marine Quig, besides the trench going across where we had to replace a water, uh, service line. All that's been blacked out for recent years. I mean, it's been, it's been a few years, but it's been, it's been recent. And then Four Street over here, that's been a certain, I mean, the other one, I would say Six Street. Six Street up two Cedars in the corner, probably could use chip and seal, you know, uh. But my biggest, my biggest concern is the trench lines and the service line trenches are where they actually patched them from the water line project, how that's gonna interfere with chip and seal. I mean, chip and seal and tack oil, they only put tack oil so thick and then spread the chips across it. How's that gonna?
Say a little bit on that. You gotta fill a little bit on your.
I don't know if it'd be better off to do a Dan overlay with the trenches first, you know?
Seems like it would.
That's what they did on St. Peter, they did a Dan overlay and did over the town. So what about Third, do you think?
The other street, we need it all the way down. I mean, all the way from Mulberry, all the way back up here, probably all the way out to Pond Street or at least.
Or Pond.
Yeah, and I mean, that there though, there again, chip and seal, I mean.
Do you really want chip and seal out?
I mean.
Does it look good?
Do you wanna just spend money on a hillside? I mean, or what would I do? I mean, we'll just sit here with rocking with the hill for two months. So.
I personally think that probably should be done right away.
Joker's a cheaper.
It's gonna keep coming down.
I mean, I mean, Joker's the only one that's gonna.
Well, they did, but.
So what I'm just saying, I know we only had one bid at one time.
Yeah.
If they're the cheapest bid, I mean, Joker does, I mean, like, I mean, every company's got flaws, but they can do it, roll.
And, and you know, you know, the transport route, they talked about doing those two, including in that bid.
Are you talking, you talking about where all the headouts are at?
Yeah, he talked about to put it at.
If they're gonna include that, it'd be great, cause they can dig them out fast and throw them and patch them.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, by the time I dig them out and one of us goes gets hot mix.
That's cool, yeah.
I mean, they got the machines to do everything, a lot of having to do them all.
Definitely got their idea and the workers and everything.
But we definitely need to get that done before winter time hits, cause if we start falling snow, we're gonna go around the corner, right?
So, I mean, that's something I guess, I mean.
If you guys, if the fudge is there, we can do it, roll it.
Good.
All right. For the purple wave items, so I met with a guy with purple wave sort of family today. He come down and just kind of get an idea. He went on a fire truck and showed me some ones close to yours. So, I mean, what they're going for and what they're still for, starting seeing, I mean, it's as close to what you're kind of wanting or what are you wanting?
I don't see five out of it.
Never know about that anymore, yeah, so. Then next week, he sent some of that to the pictures and everything else, so. I was gonna ask him, yeah, what about these little hose reels or anything miscellaneous you wanna try to get rid of or you wanna keep them whole thing?
I mean, a lot of that was basically given to us for other, other trucks. And I mean, if I decided if we could get our new brush truck, we can use some of that for our.
I know, I'm just asking, this is the way we're in, why I was like. So, yeah, there's the reels up there.
No, well, everything, pretty well, next year, you're gonna have room, everything sunk down.
So, so that's if he's gonna get the paperwork sent over for us and everything like that, so.
And then connected to that is the tractor. Did you talk to?
I, yes, I read this and the one's still not in. And I don't know where, where it's at. To this point, I'm not calling it anymore.
Okay.
He's got those other ones, like you showed me. There's one in there.
They're smaller?
It's a little bit more than we got, but he had a John Deere fifty, what was it? Was it fifty? Fifty-seventies, but it had a backhoe attachment already on it. So, I don't know what those go for. Trent's got one. I don't know if you've seen it, if those are any good or not.
I don't know.
So it's choice six, you know, so. I was just waiting to see if we went on it. So it's choice six, you know, so I'll just wait and see if we can call it, call it in the mall.
Yeah.
You know, before we finally made our final decision on the tractor, that we're gonna, we're gonna give that much a trade.
Yeah, we need to push on that because, uh, given what you all have said about our system, you know, to keep it current.
And we need to probably know the road route better, because now the year box is starting to go, like, totally gone. So that's a safety issue, we can try welding the rest, but there's not a lot of this, then, I mean.
Right.
So once you think it's salvable, I.
I actually did try to get some, you know, flash, you know, but my thing is, I'm, uh, once you have your, uh, housing in the top start going out like that, you basically gotta refab the whole thing, so. You're in, cost for steel and refabbing, have somebody refabbing, or, I mean, I could weld, but I might have to refab something like that.
And I mean, it's starting to tilt with this, that's why some shillies are down purple way, if we wanna do, because he has road reeds like that, but they're a lot cheaper than our John Deere brand, but they're, but they can be better.
How wide?
Seven.
Seven foot?
Maybe that's a small one.
And that's adequate for our needs?
Yeah, seven foot, and I, these guys might recognize to like that for real big ones.
All right, well, if we can get a deal on that with the tractor, then that's a lot to do with it.
All right. O'Neil's, we need to figure that out.
Uh, so we could go, I guess we have sort of a bank and get that pulled up to hand and then just.
All right, we need order one. It's taken care of. Well, I mean, but our other issue is something that major been taken care of.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think that's, yeah.
But O'Neil's, y'all, we just have to take it off.
They just got a pair of paperwork, they're calling the warranty, you don't want it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got just.
I can help, I can go to the person in the morning and get back to our home.
All right, great.
But then our other, other issue with the load station.
That's what I was gonna have an address to, we want to do that.
Do what?
It'll take the money out.
Listen to me.
Okay.
The load station has been taken care of.
What's he wants?
Both homes, being paid for.
Okay, the chambers helping us.
St. Mary's Chamber is helping us.
Okay.
They're paying both of them, and they're also paying for the contact, or the contact, new stuff, that way it's.
Relays and stuff.
The new, the new box stuff.
Yes, it's all gonna be.
Thank you, that's great.
I have, I actually have a new car here that rolling some, it's the Chamber. That was very, very awesome of the Chamber.
It was awesome, yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So that, that was a lot of expense.
Yeah, that's twelve thousand, that's twelve thousand dollars.
So that was awesome of the Chamber.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all over those pumps, right?
Hmm?
Over those pumps. How over those pumps?
What pumps?
The, the stage.
Since ninety three, like everybody signed a range.
I think they, I think they, they were put in and them, uh, shoots out for ninety eight or something like that, I don't know. I can't remember their own.
Would they would, do you think they would put them in whenever they did, maybe so?
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah.
It's got nineteen ninety three inside the concrete, or the concrete.
Yeah, that's when they put the.
Yeah, that's when you go ahead and with that control.
Like so originally, and then after the.
Yeah, okay. So.
If that is for.
That's one stress relief, all the chamber room, thank you for the chamber.
That's wonderful.
This is a participation, anybody?
Yeah, who mowed the, my citrus trees down north of Bader's?
Yeah, I saw that.
Was it me?
I took date on the last one, so you know what?
Well, you mowed two or three, but when now they're all gone.
I mowed two or three, yeah, I infested it.
So.
Mine have been Cody's.
Yeah.
Not realizing they were there, because he did mow it.
That's not the first time he's mowed trees down that I've.
Nah, I, this year, I don't know about.
So.
He gets to join me at a tree planting party.
If you have anything to do with people mowing, there's no mowing of the citrus trees. They stay.
He might have saw them, as tall as that grass was, it was probably as tall as the trees.
They have flags, they have flags, and the rest of the road is, there's still an existence, so.
I'm just saying, he might, he probably accidentally did it, I don't think he did it on purpose.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta, you gotta realize he blind and went on, so.
Yeah, my grass.
Your, your, your tree's tall.
My point on that Frankie Brad, we did a thing the other day, the Department Conservation, they may use the agency to maintain that area and everything, at one time.
Where?
Over here.
On the side of the road.
Over at the boat ramp.
Well, the boat ramp, they take care of that.
No, we used to brush all of it, I don't know how that's set up.
Uh, they, the actual ramp went down in, uh, they leased, every so many years, they sign a lease, there should be paperwork somewhere in the office.
I'm excited about that, I said it though.
The maintenance?
Yeah, the.
These two, they been coming to mow the little driveway.
Yeah, but, but, hey, they quit doing that, but then we started doing it, but down at the boat ramp, we used to brush haul all that. And since I've been gone, it's never been brush hauled, so I didn't know if there was, that we should do it no more, or what was on.
I said, I haven't seen anything.
There should be paperwork in there, people, they sign a lease with us or whatever, or the boat ramp.
And where, where?
I was under the, in question, they was supposed to take care of.
Well, the only thing that they, so when Joanne was in here, I remember they used to sign a lease and do all that, and we brush hauled all that down here. And before I left, I was brush hauling it still. The only time they would come down is if we had a flood and we couldn't move debris, Joanne would call them, they'd bring their dogger down or whatever, and they'd fix the driveway and stuff. But we just, we maintained the grass along the creek.
They're saying that they.
I don't know, I don't.
They have to brush, brush haul two every month.
Yeah.
These cell phone.
So if there's an agreement, putting a lease, if we get paid for it, we need to make sure.
Yeah, they're playing the, we lay contact. Railroad, I don't know, but turn around and go there.
Totally. Make sure you're getting enough money.
Have to be.
I don't know.
No, I'm like, road.
Oh, road, that, 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 that's a trade.
Where is that?
Maybe the mother's.
Would be, would be in our conservation.
And we're trying to be.
Or is that someplace?
Where is that one happening?
In the ditch, at the ditch, that ditch they made?
Like they're always.
All the way from here. Oh, yeah? That's everybody, I don't know how they made that ditch.
So where is the office that has to do the boat ramp? Is it in Cape, Caribou, um?
Jeff's.
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 You'd have to contact Jeff's, well, actually, you know, you contact Kate Southeast.
Southeast region?
I have to look for that lease first before.
I used to have Sheldon, remember?
Before I, you know, even looking through.
No, Sheldon, I don't know, I used to have her, remember, that's how I got it, before something happened, but.
And, yeah, why do you think so?
Road now? Road to Northern, it's all potato.
I have a tar, I'll be there, I'll be still there, but.
Oh, man, I think those are people like.
I don't know, there's a number on the little, the little sign that's calling them. There's a Department Caesar information. I think they designed for them now, maybe.
No, they've been, not for years, they're dead.
The number over there, for just the main office, I don't need the video.
Oh, it's actually, oh, yeah, it's still wrote on the wall.
I will, I'll try that.
Yeah, it's still, anything else on anybody's mind you wanna talk about or cause concern, or going close?
Thank you.
All right, motion, if you mowed the old work session.
I made a motion to close the work session.
That's seconded.
Second, motion made, seconded, all favor?
Right.
Any close? Motion is passed.